Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting in the Worcester City Council, which because of Labor Day, is on this Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. It has now passed 7:30 PM. The next meeting is scheduled for September 18th, 2017. That will be a Monday. Mr. Paul, as Clerk at Council, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Ms. Knappich?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Silvestri?
Here.
Mr. Albright?
Here. Despite the long weekend, all are present and accounted for, so we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, although there will be an executive session at the end of the legislative portion of the meeting. Now, at this time, I would ask you to join the members of the City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, one and all. This time, a motion to approve the minutes from August 21st would be appreciated.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Knappich. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The August 21st council meeting minutes are approved. We turn our attention now to communications from the Mayor and Administration. So, welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, President Bidendeck and Council members, and hopefully, all of you or most of you got a chance to visit the Safety Service Center this evening before this meeting to see us in full action now out of that wonderful new facility for our community. I do want to take this moment in time, since we now have that facility up and fully occupied with our safety forces, to say thank you to folks that truly made the new safety service happen. Thanks to Chief Matt Fisher, to Chief Barry Saley, to Captain Scott Rotolo, to Assistant Chief Nathan Murphy, to Roger Kovalarsik, John Rice, Joel Montgomery, John G. Johnson, design-build contractor and construction manager, Bowen Architects, local contractors, of which there were many, our admin team that helped to sort of watch over and keep things on the tracks, and last but definitely not least, Worcester City Council. Members, you folks voted to move forward with a facility that hasn't been done in the city of Worcester since 1961. We're hoping this new facility brings us 50 to 60 years of wonderful use for our community. We believe it's in the right position for our city for the next decades to come, and hopefully, you saw the quality of a facility that was there in front of you. So, thank you, one and all, for the faith that you put in our community to move it forward, and we're pleased to finally have reached this point after a number of years of moving forward with it. Also up there tonight, if you had an opportunity, we swore in our newest firefighter, Aaron Spurlock. He was the first swearing-in that we got to do in that facility, so we hope that that will imbibe many, many more over the years. Just, I want you to know tomorrow, we're getting an honor, welcome Heritage Ohio. They are coming to Worcester for a training session, and then we're doing a progressive dinner throughout the downtown. So, I think there's probably close to 50 people coming to our community from Heritage Ohio. They are the group that sponsors the Main Street organization, so that's our overarching group that encompasses Main Street Worcester. And also, as Mr. Bidendeck said, if we could ask for an executive session at the end of this council meeting to discuss personnel matters, we would truly appreciate it. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Bidendeck. I think Matt Fisher has something.
Yes, segueing, his would be to recognize Chief Fisher, who has a little plaque he'd like to present to council.
I was hoping to have a chance to see both tonight, but I know it was kind of hit or miss. Some of you were there, and then some of you left, and some others came, but Fire Chief Saley and I got this plaque to hang in the lobby. It's just a little dedication, has all your names, just as a way for us in our respective divisions to say thank you, because we sincerely appreciate it. So, we'll get this hung up in the lobby, and hopefully, it will hang there for many years to come. So, thank you.
That's very nice of you, Chiefs. Appreciate it. And then I know Jonathan Malley has a request to appoint two members from the City Council on the CRA. Now, the thing is, Jonathan, there's going to be some elections here. Can you wait until the first of the year, or do you need bodies right now?
We will need, preferably, somebody before, or before the end of October. That person does not need to be a member of council, they just need to be appointed by council. But it's a council selection, which two people council wishes to approve.
Yeah. I think in the past, we've had some of the council members.
Yes. It was always said, two members of council.
Currently, no.
So, you need one right now, or do you need both?
Preferably, we would need both of council wishes to have one vacated until January. You know, we'll proceed with this previous year, we'll be okay as far as that's concerned. But that's your election. So, I would also like to say thank you to yourself and also Ms. Knappich for serving that role here in the past. But we can make do with one, and you can assign the others, you see fit.
Okay. So, well, it's council's discretion, that's who they want to appoint. They want to think about it, then appoint some, someone or two people at the next meeting, or do you have someone in mind right now?
I want to be here till the end of the year.
They need one, definitely.
Mr. Albright has his hand up.
I'd like to nominate Craig Sanders.
I would second that nomination.
Any further nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations. I would move that we appoint Craig Sanders, assuming he'll accept that. Has not registered any sort of emotion. Any sort of emotion. I would move that we appoint Craig Sanders by unanimous acclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll finish.
Congratulations, Mr. Sanders, and I know you'll do a good job, because I think you're on, are you on the Turk, or where do I see your face?
You're twice a month.
Yeah. Other than, I didn't know if, he's not already on.
In fact, he is, but he's not appointed for the new role. He is actually the CRA's representative for the CRA Housing Council, so we'll welcome Mr. Sanders back in his new role, and we'll ask the CRA to make another appointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. See, I thought he was connected with the CRA. It's just that we only meet once or twice a year, so it's always hard to figure out. But thank you for doing that. I know you do a lot of other things, so I appreciate you taking some additional free time and devoting it to the CRA. So, we'll figure out on someone, you know, come the first of January, unless you're hard pressed, then we can maybe press someone else in the service before your meeting, okay? Thank you very much, Mr. Malley.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Would this be appropriate time to ask for an infrastructure chair meeting?
Sure.
I've talked to Roger, I've talked to Kurt, but I know Roger's in the suite with Kurt, and we thought it would be nice to have a meeting about an hour. We're going to have a PowerPoint presentation about what's been done the past year, what plans are for next year. They were thinking six thirty to seven on Monday, October 2nd. Is that, or have there really been any conflicts with that?
No, I know that on the 18th, there's an informal open house there at the new Material Facilities building, which used to be the old State Garage. So, I don't think anything, you're the first one to book that date.
Okay.
You're like a wedding planner. You're out there ahead of things.
So, infrastructure, six thirty to seven thirty on Monday, October 2nd, and not just the infrastructure, but I would hope that everybody in council will come, anybody in Administration that would like to be here would certainly be welcome. And Roger, Kurt, I think they have a real nice agenda, and they're going to run by me, but I know that it'll be great for I to look at it. I thought it'd be nice to kind of sum up what's been happening, and I told them how pleased I was with some of the activities that have been done around the city.
All right. So, we'll consider that infrastructure on the council agenda at six thirty that October That brings us to petitions. We have none, communications from public, and Ms. Eberhart, I would invite you to talk to the Administration. She had concerns about the pipelines coming through our aquifers, and I know we objected to it, but, and it has been brought up in council before, that of our concerns, but I had related that federal law pretty much preempts us from doing anything, and legally, it would be spending probably money that would not be well spent. But I would invite you to talk to either the Mayor or Mr. Montgomery, see what we've actually done.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seeing that we're going to have an executive session, I would be proud of not being here. Do you have a similar comment? Because I could just, if I wanted to, that Mayor?
Sure.
Maybe you prepare, you and someone in Administration, prepare maybe a little summary, because I read some of the articles over the newspapers, and I understand that you were, your real anxiety was kind of lessened when you found out some things from the company, about the company. Maybe you could share that with us at the next meeting, maybe?
Sure. I can give you an update at this point, just off the cuff, if you'd like, but I would be happy to prepare something for you then in writing, too.
Yeah, I don't want to, you know, have you do that. It's a question. Want to, actually?
Um, sure. Be happy to.
It's not coming up.
Okay.
I'm going to give it to you, but I can't get it to come to the agenda.
That brings us to Mr. Bowers, and I don't know if you want to speak now or wait until your matter. He's here with regard to the tax abatement transfer from the building that Mr. Ratliff had, and Mr. Bowers is the principal of OptNetz buying the building. So, if you want to wait?
I can wait. I just signed up in case you guys needed to ask me questions.
Right. Well, my guess is they'll ask you questions, but it probably might be more effective to ask at the same time we're actually considering the legislation, if that's okay with you. And finally, Greg Garis, if you'd stand and state your name, and tell us your address and what you want to speak on.
My name's Greg Garis. I live at 347 North Grant Street, and I signed up to speak on the Resolution of 1739, which is off-rod and expenditure funds for consulting services with Green Arrow Engineering. And I have, Mr. Sanders, a question or two, because upon a little research, didn't we just appropriate last May, I think, past May, June, $50,000? And again, this evening, if it passes, what sort of repairs are needing or maintenance is in such dire emergency that we need another $50,000? And for consulting, and also, it apparently could be going to a contact person by the name of Kathy Roche, who's an accountant downtown at 121 Mark Street. It's an accounting firm. Wouldn't the money be going to Green Arrow Engineering LLC for their repairs and engineering and consulting? Why is it going to an accounting firm? She seems to be the only contact person for Green Arrow Engineering here in town.
Can't answer that. Don't know?
We'll find out.
We'll discuss it more as the evening goes on. I mean, at this point, that particular part of it, I can't speak to. As for the additional funding, whether you or may not remember, but back when we purchased the anaerobic digester from Quasar, they had deferred a quote load of maintenance that they had not done. And so, ultimately, part of the negotiation that we did with them is we negotiated them down almost $300,000, because we knew there was going to be deferred equipment maintenance that was going to have to be done, because they hadn't done it. So, at this point, that's part of what Green Arrow's doing. But again, we'll get into the nuts and bolts of it when we actually get to the legislation. Thank you.
There's no council committee report that I'm aware of. Civil Service Committee did meet on Tuesday, July 8th. That brings us to old business. It'll be the second reading of ordinance number 2017-23. It'll be presented by Ms. Knappich. Before I get to you, Ms. Knappich, I will have Mr. Paul read the title, if she would, please.
Ordinance number 2017-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 163 of the Worcester Codified Ordinances with respect to part-time and temporary employees, Sections 163.02 and 163.04.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. As we discussed at our last meeting two weeks ago, this amendment to this ordinance brings us into line and compliance with the Affordable Care Act and the federal regulations that surround the Affordable Care Act. We will be redefining our part-time employees to be defined consistent with the Affordable Care Act, that they will be individuals employed to work less than a 30-hour work week of an assigned division and department. There was another change that was made with respect to insurance, and under that, in the past, the city had offered part-time employees insurance benefits, but they were self-pay insurance benefits, which quite frankly, no one took advantage of, because they were far too expensive. And as no one took advantage of those, and no one showed any interest in taking advantage of those, we decided that we would eliminate the section concerning medical insurance, where it stated that employees shall qualify for self-payment for medical insurance coverage. Payments shall be made to the city on the prescribed monthly dates to maintain coverage, and coverage shall be subject to those limitations of the health insurance company. So, this brings us in compliance with the Affordable Care Act, or I should say, these changes do. Are there any questions, any further comments? We discussed it a little bit at our last meeting. I have not gotten any correspondence, phone calls, letters, texts, emails from constituents regarding this piece of legislation.
I guess I make a motion to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappich, and second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Okay. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Ansel. Speak just by a hair there, Mr. Sanders. Now, any other questions, comments, inquiries? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance number 2017-23 passes. That brings us to Resolution number 2017-37. It will also be presented by Ms. Knappich, and also, Mr. Paul, if you would do me the favor of reading the title, I'd appreciate it.
Resolution number 2017-37, a resolution authorizing the Mayor on behalf of the city to enter into an annexation agreement with Ohio Power Company and Worcester Township.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. This is a second reading of an ordinance that brought forward two weeks ago at our last meeting, and basically is for an annexation of 89 acres into the city of Worcester from Worcester Township. Ohio Power is the entity that wishes us to annex this property into the city. We do have the representatives here. Again, I appreciate you being here this evening, if there's anything else that you'd like to add from the last meeting.
Nothing to add. We went to the Planning Commission afterwards and had a hearing there. Some of the neighboring homeowners know that was a few of the questions last time, or a few present to ask a question of the planning facility, so we gave all those. That's the only update we have in the pod.
Good, thank you. And again, I want to apologize. I said that I would be at that Planning Commission meeting, but I had a family medical emergency, so, but I did follow up and check with members of the Planning Commission, and did not hear any objections or any concerns regarding this annexation. So, at this point, I would open it up for any questions or comments from council.
Thank you. From what I can gather from the maps, and I think you threw maps, an increased number of maps, because there was more of the fact that we had less time, I thank you for that. It seems, though, that when you look at the big plot of land, the building itself, parking lot, the office building, the building, the houses, the buildings, that you, that you doubt, is fairly close, closer to the rear of the residential properties than maybe it has to be. I guess my question is, is there a reason, I've looked at the contour map, tried to figure out, maybe it's the contour of the land dictating where this building must be, as opposed to maybe moving it further south, I think?
Right, that is correct, because of the situation of the land that we need it to be where we're at. And I think the, as we discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, the line of the building, so I wouldn't say it's the external boundary of the building, it's going to be at least, if not more, 60 yards from the residential colonies over there.
That was my next question. So, this one map that shows, although the difference is a little small, but it apparently shows dotted lines and different symbols where the trees are going to go and the shrubbery and things like that. So, the closest that that dotted line is on one of the maps there is 60 yards.
No, the actual external wall of the building is going to be 60 yards. Now, I don't know about the landscaping itself, but that's what you're suggesting.
Yeah. At this meeting, and I saw the letter that went out to the property owners, and we mentioned earlier that there were some questions from the property owners. How did you gauge the mood of the neighbors that showed up?
I thought they were receptive. One of the questions had to do with whether or not this would be a 24-hour operational facility with a full night shift, just a concern about traffic and things of that nature at night. And we had indicated that's not the plan, we're going to use a night basis for emergency. Other than that, I thought that the neighboring landlord was a pre-perceptive, the plan didn't have any of that.
So, you're going to be putting up what the city calls for as far as buffering is concerned?
Correct.
And I noticed the reason there's a rear entrance, that's because of the right-of-way that comes up to that kind of intrusion there that you're not moving.
Station. So, the station in the back, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yes, so there will be a road that leads from the service center that's to be built back to our station, such that we will not need to use that access off of Guyer's Chapel. That will only be for a limited purpose.
Good to know.
And that right-of-way has been there for a while?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
Well, I would just point out that, you know, if they didn't annex, they wouldn't have to do any of this.
Absolutely.
Because our zoning and planning and commission rules and regulations wouldn't apply.
Right.
About the only thing I was still curious about, and I think you may have spoke a little bit to this last time, but what was the main purpose in taking the existing building and leaving that outside the annexation? As I really looked over the paperwork this last time, I mean, we're really creating a little bit of a flag lot there, that's still county land, and I guess my concerns are eased somewhat by the fact that, you know, that will be enveloped by land that's in the city, but what are the plans for that, or why was it advantageous for you to subtract that from the annexation?
I would just say that it wasn't really advantageous for us. We thought that that was sort of a bonus for the township to leave it there for income purpose.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, I'd move to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rule by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Could you please call the roll, Mr. Paul?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, Ms. Knappich?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Last chance to grill Ohio Power. Seeing no takers, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number 2017-37 passes, and good luck with your project. I'm sure it will end up wearing nice, and being in the city will also afford the, some additional tax dollars, hopefully, and afford the neighbors a little bit more protection than at the annex, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for attending.
That brings us to the second reading of ordinance number 2017-24, and that will be, again, presented by Ms. Knappich. We're working the overtime right after a holiday.
I'm up to it.
While I get there, I'll have Mr. Paul, if she would, read the title.
Ordinance number 2017-24, an ordinance amending Part 9 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to provide for amendments and new sections to Chapter 921 Water.
Ms. Knappich, I turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you. Okay, this is, again, another one ordinance that we looked at at our last meeting two weeks ago, and has to do with sections of our water ordinances, and basically, it brings us compliant with some of the EPA standards. The main issues involved here are cross-connection and backflow prevention, and also dealing with some private water wells. As was indicated in our summary, state law requires us to adopt rules, regulations, and procedures for the safe and adequate operation of potable water systems. The EPA enforces that, as we all know, and so these rules and regulations, which go to the cross-connection and backflow and backflow prevention and the private water wells brings us into compliance with these. I think if there are any further questions, Mr. Givens is here to answer those, although I think he did an excellent job explaining why this was important at the last meeting. But I'm sure he would be very willing to field any further questions as well. Okay.
The bottom line, it's needed, and we need to have some additional regulations on our books so we stay in compliance and keep the EPA off our back. And we don't want a water well like, like I said last time, like our engineer had, to be still connected to good backflow into the water system.
Absolutely.
And just as a side, or just as an additional note on this, as Chair of the Utility Commissioner Committee for the council, yeah, this is definitely something that we need to do. We need to clarify these items that at this point are confused, just need a clarification. So this is perfect for that. And I just also want to put for the record that I've had no calls from anyone in the city community about this legislation, so.
Not by?
I've got, believe there's very few water wells in existence that are still operating, but there might, might be a few and far between.
Few and far between if they are. I think most people have the opportunity to, to hook into city water, going to hook into city water, and then they're required to, to close off their wells, right? So, yeah.
Actually, just to, just to make that note, having, having been on both sides of that and thrown up in the house that, now, when I moved to this community, it was not part of the city and it got annexed in. I, I thought it was good that you, that there is the last portion of the section there, nine twenty-one point oh eight, there is allowance for keeping of a private well as long as it's properly designed to comply with the city's cross-connection and backflow prevention requirements. So to me, that's important. There's probably more than you think, people out there that have, that have been annexed in. And I know some people like to keep as a water, their plants and that type of thing. So, you know, it is a little healthier on plants with no chlorine in the water and other types of things. So I think that's, that's important to have in there.
Yes.
Just on section nine twenty-one point nine nine under penalty, we've gone from a maximum, says chapter, if any provision is violated, shall be fined not more than one thousand dollars, as the previous ordinance stated. And we're now allowing one thousand dollars per day. Seems like a significant increase in fees. Is that part of the state law that we're curating?
Yeah, that mirrors, mirrors the model ordinance. That's the way EPA's penalties are set up. And the way the higher revised code was set up, the only, the only thing that allowed us to do was shut your water off.
Right.
So at least now there's a little bit of incentive to at least, you know, hey, if that's threatened, you know, to move forward and get that taken care of.
Right, and we don't have to impose that penalty.
They can be negotiated.
It, it can be less, but I would think that, you know, the first thing we'd do is shut off the water in any event. But yes, it corresponds with state law.
Except for residential properties included?
Well, you know, when a single household could put our entire water system at risk, a thousand dollars is certainly incentive for them to comply. And I don't have a problem with that if someone wants to be foolish enough to continue using it after being told not to use it.
And that, that's the key. It's, it's protecting the rest of the city's water.
And that's exactly why EPA recommends that.
If there are no further questions, I would move to suspend the rules and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappet, is there a second? Second by Mr. Albright. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Knappet?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappet, second by Mr. Myers. Any last comments, questions? Try to get Mr. Givens to actually speak instead of nod his head. Okay, seeing none, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappet?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-four passes. We're not going to let you off easy, Ms. Knappet. You have the next two. But before we get to ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six under new business, I will ask kindly again if Ms. DePaolo would please read the title.
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, an ordinance amending part one of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, to provide for amendments and new sections to title five, chapter one thirty-three, civil service rules and regulations.
Ms. Knappet, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. We did get quite a bit of information regarding these updates to the civil service rules and regulations. Again, this is to be compliant with state law, and we are just updating our rules. This has gone before the civil services rules and regulations. They have recommended our adoption of this. Basically, what it does is it updates, it incorporates legal updates, it does some clarifications. It also incorporates the same type of changes that we made earlier in another piece of legislation by updating part, the part-time provisions to comply with the Affordable Care Act. And it provides some updates for safety services, hiring and testing. So at this point, I would either ask our law director or our police and fire chiefs to address this if they would like to.
The changes that are in this ordinance, some of them had to be done. I mean, we had outdated, I think there was a limit on the age of hiring. We couldn't do that. There were many things that were outdated, just in conflict with federal law, some things. We also put a lateral hire provision in the ordinances. And it must be noted too, and I think that was in the legislation, that this was run by the Civil Service Commission, and they reviewed everything and, and voted to approve it. We also broadened our testing criteria. In other words, and Matt can speak to this too, we're allowing more positions, more positions to test for promotions. We're opening that up a little bit. What else did we do? There were just, those were the, the main points that are in here. So, and Matt can speak to the lateral hires and other issues, did you?
Yeah. Chief, you said on that board talked about lateral hires. A good example is, and the question was asked, why, why the lateral hire? An officer from another agency, I didn't do the background process, made him a job offer. He called me the next day and said, you know, "Chief, I just found out my wife is pregnant. I can't take the pay cut to come there because he's going from an established position where he's been there for a number of years to a new hire position." Well, there's a, there's a pay disparity in that where if you're doing a lateral transfer and you're bringing somebody from this to this, you don't have that drop in pay. So that's just one example of part of the reason behind that.
And it's not uncommon. I, when I drafted this, I borrowed it from City of Lakewood. Cleveland has a lateral hire. It's very common. Right now, we don't have the ability to bring someone with more experience in at comparable pay. So in this provision, if you look there, I think it's firefighters are class B, is it? Class B, and the police are commensurate with experience. And we also have a provision in there that if, once the lateral hire testing is exhausted, or we, we have to move to hire from the base civil service exam test. So we can't hire every hire from a lateral hire. The next hire has to be, yeah, from new recruiting. So, and that's in there too. And the union was, I don't think there were any comments from the unions. Unions reviewed all of these provisions in the rules.
I had asked Detective Lemon, who is the union rep for the OPBA, to come tonight if you had questions as far as the union's, police union's position, he might be able to speak to that.
Can you give this lady to say that the union agrees with this? However, we don't disapprove of it either. We don't take a stand on the civil service issues. Keep in mind that the union would, would have issue with wages, working conditions, things of that nature which these don't cover. I have reviewed these from a personal standpoint. I don't see any issues, but we never put these out to the union because it simply isn't a union issue at this point. Should we have issue with something that, I think there's some probationary period things in there, we would make that argument at bargaining time, or we would try to get that in our contract. Let's say, for instance, they were trying to get a twenty-four month probationary period. They're not, let's say, for instance, they were, and we had issue with that. That's a bargaining issue, and the contract would then supersede that. They're looking at a twelve month. I know from my history with contracts, that's not out of line. But I want to make it very clear that this was never presented to the union as a whole. So we don't, we're not here saying we approve or disapprove of changing.
Understand. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Because we have such extensive changes, I think I am going to leave this on first reading.
That's good.
With an indication that unless we, I, we get something huge from public or from, from the police officers or the chief or whomever, I will intend to, I do intend to put it to third, third reading and to pass it to the next meeting.
All right, we'll consider ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six as having its first reading. That brings us to ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven. This will be again presented by Ms. Knappet. And again, Ms. DePaolo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven, an ordinance amending chapter one sixty-two, management benefits of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Knappet, the floor is yours, I think, for the last time, I see.
I, I think so. This is a, an ordinance that was addressed in a newspaper article, and it goes to a change in the structure of the police department. And I would like to have Chief Fisher address this and tell, tell us, I know he's spoken with each member of council, but for the public, where we're going and what you're, you're doing with your department.
Yeah, so the changes, is, part of it is to bring it in line with the fire department. Fire department currently operates, operates under a standard of a chief and assistant chief and then captains and captains. So for us, that would be, be part of the reason. Basically, we're in line. It's the same rank structure and all the parts. The other part of that is with, with the assistant chief and then with the addition of a, of a second captain position. Again, it's not, I'm not adding bodies. It's not, I'm not hiring anybody. It's basically really just kind of shifting titles. So I don't know if that's clear. I know I've spoke to all of you. If you have questions, something I can answer, I'll, I'll do my best to. But, but that's, that's really what it is. You know, we've, I guess I'll leave it at that and then answer questions if you have them.
So, so basically, the fire department has a chief and an assistant chief. The police department would have a chief and an assistant chief. And then, then the ranks would go from there.
Right, then the ranks would flow down, correct.
Okay, and so we'd be adding an assistant chief's position.
Correct.
But actually not adding an addition, an additional person.
Correct, correct. We're not adding, we wouldn't be adding any additional bodies.
Okay, so, so it's actually not a new hire position. How, if at all, does this affect the number of, of patrol persons on the street?
It, it doesn't. The number of patrol persons on the street has been, in fact, I have the data with me, between fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen has, has been fairly consistent. We have some supervisory vacancies right now, which has, has caused a reduction of, of a couple of supervisors who would be working the road. But it's just because we have those vacancies right now. Once those vacancies are filled, then we're right back to where we were prior to that. So there really is a reduction in that.
And, and those vacancies will be filled?
Yes.
John?
No, I, I listened to our interview during our discussion sheet in your office. And then, of course, I read through my paper copy of the fire department materials and I read your rationale. And I understand it from captain up to non-union.
Correct.
And one of the points that you made in your rationale is that it's sometimes difficult for a, particularly a lieutenant, I guess, to do some supervisory type work when they're actually possibly being asked to discipline a federal union member. Is that one of the real sticking points here?
That's correct.
Okay. And yet, I get the idea, well, from the literature that you have, is normally there are two lieutenants, but they're going to be left unfulfilled, unfilled.
That, that would be the plan, yes.
Yes, there's one captain now, and this plan would call for two captains.
Correct.
What's the advantage of having an additional captain because no lieutenants?
Well, you, you already said it. Mr. Albright, you end up having supervisory positions that aren't, aren't in the union membership. The problem is, when, when you're a union member and supervisor, you have to investigate whether it's a lower ranking or another officer, it inherently causes problems because you're in the same unit. So that's, that's the rationale.
It would seem to me that it would be a stronger argument if the, if, I guess the choice would be to have one captain and one lieutenant, and therefore you wouldn't be adding any new personnel.
This isn't adding any new personnel?
I know, but it's the shift. To me, if, if, I understand what you're saying about the captain, it's going to captain and lieutenant. I think the lieutenants obviously serve a purpose, so they wouldn't have been there all these years. And in terms of supervisory work, maybe not called to discipline people, but to be a higher voice in the hierarchy working your way up to you. I don't know, what, does it make more sense to have one captain and retain one lieutenant than abandon the lieutenant position altogether and have two captains? And that, that's what I thought about when I read this over about three or four times.
For me, it makes, again, my opinion, and, you know, six and a half years is, is, or six years as chief, Mr. Albright, it, it makes sense to me to have captains in those roles and not lieutenants. Because depending on, on how they're situated, whether you have one on each half of the department, or whether you have one in administrative or one in a patrol capacity, they're still going to be overseeing people below them. And when you oversee people below you, and you have to do an investigation of misconduct or some other type of, of issue like that, you have to be able to hold them accountable. You have to be able to not be in the union. And you have to be willing to say, hey, this is, you didn't do this right, or you need to do this differently. And so, again, it's, those are just my thoughts.
I guess it's just a philosophical difference of opinion. I, I guess I hold to the, to the standard that I would expect a union member I, I guess I hold to the, to the standard that I would expect a union member in a lieutenant's position to do their job. And if it entailed supervision of patrolmen beneath them and they, and they were expected to do investigations and subsequent reporting, that that could be counted upon, whether a union or not.
This is actually very unusual to have a lieutenant, or that type of position. Supervisors and managers and confidential employees are usually excluded from unions, completely.
So in other words, most police departments don't have lieutenants?
There's, a lot of police departments have lieutenants, but I'm just saying, in all other unions and public sector, you usually don't have a supervisor in a union. They're usually, it's usually excluded.
What role would a lieutenant have, chief, other than the supervisory role? Give us some idea of what a lieutenant does. If, if, in fact, this were to pass and you were to fill lieutenant positions in the future, other than the supervisory role that seems to give him, you know, caught between a rock and hard place, in your view, what other things does a lieutenant do that wouldn't put him in that line as far as being a part of the union?
Well, there's a lot of things a lieutenant might do that might not put them in that line, Mr. Albright. I mean, provide leadership, provide guidance, you know, have a, have a good base of job knowledge, which is not having all the answers. It's, it's, you know, patrolman or sergeant comes to you and asks you a question, being able to answer it, if you can't answer it, does he find the information? It's communication on a regular basis. Part of, part of what that role was at, at one time was checking paperwork on a daily basis. But again, all of that, Mr. Albright, flows back to being able to hold people accountable. Because if it's my job to check paperwork every day and I'm consistently seeing issues, but I'm not addressing them and I'm not willing to hold someone accountable, instead I'm just having sidebar conversations after sidebar conversations and nothing is ever documented, then nothing changes.
You know, I, I guess I thought, when I saw this, I think a lieutenant that's a union member and not officially a part of the administration, you know, as I view administration, non-union, I think of a master sergeant. I don't know if I, that's a good analogy or not, but I think of a master sergeant who's, you know, not an officer, doesn't have all the privileges of an officer, first lieutenant up, but certainly, you know, I've never been in the military, but I guess maybe I've watched too many. It seems to me that the master sergeant or high-ranking sergeant has all the respect in the world that they're doing their job. And if they have to report on someone beneath them, a corporal or a, or a private, I don't know that they lose that much respect on the part of the, of the people beneath them. It just, I don't know.
Mr. Albright, I agree with you 100 percent that that's the way that it should be. Regardless of whether you're in the union or not, you should not have an issue with doing your job. Holding people accountable is part of what being a supervisor is. But if you're unwilling to do that, and part of that unwillingness is because we, we share a union, or in some cases, I'm your supervisor and the union rep, because we've had that, it causes an inherent issue.
It does create a conflict of interest.
Yes, it does.
I believe it, it creates a conflict of interest in, in putting the management, organizing it the way the chief is suggesting, you never get into that situation of actually never putting a lieutenant in a situation of having to choose between management or a fellow union member. It's a very clean split between who's in management and who's in the union, and it just, it's, it's cleaner.
I guess I see a golden opportunity for a person to shine as a lieutenant.
In the best of possible worlds, absolutely.
But to John's point, the delineation in the military, the lieutenant is the first-line salaried supervisor. He's not, I mean, the sergeant is a non-commissioned officer, it's the highest rank you can get, and you're leading the troops, you're motivating the troops, you're directing the troops, and you are giving field discipline in terms of guidance to the troops, but when it comes to progressive discipline in the military, it goes up line to the lieutenant, to the captain, to the administration. So the delineation now is the question of position. Now, the lieutenant, compared to the military, has the responsibility in the military to be the first line of disciplinary progressive action to that soldier who isn't being guided properly or effectively by the sergeant in the, the union or the non-commissioned officer ranks. So in comparative terms, it's just a shift of where that lieutenant is at. I mean, we could say, hey, the lieutenant is now going to be a non-union representative and be involved with the accountability, the progressive discipline, and not have that, that challenge or that resistance of trying to represent someone that they're going to have to write up or initiate progressive discipline. So semantics is really what it's issue here. I mean, where's that line of delineation of progressive discipline documented, progressive discipline that now would be in accordance with contract terms? If someone violates the obligations of their contract, there are consequences, and that's called progressive discipline, the verbal warning, the written warning, the suspension, et cetera. So understanding that, that lieutenant is kind of like that master sergeant, sergeant analogy that John set, and it is a precarious situation as it relates to carrying out progressive discipline while representing a member of your bargaining unit. So I get that. But the thing that I have a concern, it is a progression within the ranks, and lieutenants pay more than sergeants and pay less than captains, and we are taking that step increase out for our rank and file or the individuals that don't want to go into that administrative role within law enforcement, that are great police officers, great ambassadors, but you know, that's the way the master sergeants are in the service. They don't want to be a commissioned officer. They don't want to have to deal with it. They, they know their strengths and that's where they want to stay, baby.
But Mr. Ansel, we also, in not to diss it in the discussion base, we will still have our sergeants. So our sergeants are still going to be in place, sergeants will stay in the union, there's no change there.
But chief, they won't have that opportunity to go to a lieutenant to a higher pay grade, so you're taking that step away from them.
Right. The next step for them then would be to that captain's role. So if you're, and, and you kind of said it best, it's really semantics. That's really what we're talking about here.
Really, we are.
Right.
And the only way to get out of that would be to have the lieutenants not be in the bargaining unit. And I don't think that would probably fly.
Probably not, no.
You're right, Marv, that would be the only alternative if we can accomplish the ends that means.
I think there's more that we need to.
Oh, I'm keeping this on first reading.
Okay.
This isn't going anyplace tonight.
Briefly, Mr. Montgomery, briefly.
Just briefly, I, I put a lot of, a lot of faith in Chief Fisher and Captain Rotolo, who put a lot of effort into thinking through this, using their experience and their background education in the, in the law enforcement field to come up with this. And, and one of the things that I asked them is, oh, does this exist elsewhere like this? And the answer is yes. It's similar, you know, places similar to our size, Bearborn, Kettering Springsville, Beaver Creek, Sidney, have that type of structure, chief, captain, sergeants. So it's not.
No lieutenant positions.
It's not reinventing the wheel. In addition to that, one of the things we keep abreast of are SERB, State Employment Relations Board, opinions, decisions, and those kind of things. And there's, there's a few opinions that are, that are right on point on this, where they have addressed the issue because it came up from other municipalities about this inherent conflict that exists. And their opinion is that those people in those positions should not be in the union, they should be in management.
There was a recent fire decision where captains were trying to opt in or opt out.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, they said they're conflicted because they're management, they're confidential employees, they're sitting at the bargaining table.
So that's a state board that came up with that.
And I agree with that.
And so, and this only goes on with police and fire, too.
Ms. Appropian, could you send me a site to that decision?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
It's a recent SERB.
Just the last question. Chief, what if, what if council, I don't know how much support I would get, but I, I would prefer to see, I, you know, I can understand the captain, I, I agree with John Ansel and so on and that, but I still can agree with him. I think the lieutenant post should remain. If you're going to make it, you want it to stay in the union, but for the reasons you mentioned, the leadership and so on, and maybe the job description could be altered such that they're not in that recording, let's say, mode, but they're certainly maybe a higher echelon of leadership than a sergeant would be. I, I just hesitate to abandon the lieutenant's rank in this process. I, I personally think that having an assistant chief makes sense, bringing in line with the fire department. I question whether we have to have two captains or just one, and leave at least one person in the lieutenant's position and go through and maybe look at the language of what the job, job description is for the lieutenant.
Part of what you get into that, Mr. Albright, is if you do one lieutenant and one captain in this, how do you divvy that rank structure up?
Right.
For example, so if you put a, let's say you put a lieutenant in an administrative role and you put a captain in charge of patrol, and I'm, why, as you said earlier, what if? I'm playing what ifs. Okay, if you do that, well, I now have a captain in charge of patrol who outranks the lieutenant who's an admin. So if something does happen or there's an issue and we need to pull in, let's say, this lieutenant to investigate or do something, you now have a rank issue because this one outranks this one. Where if you keep it the same, or if you have two positions of the same, for example, if you put a captain over each half of the department, there is no issue because one doesn't outrank the other. There's no inherent conflict in that because they're of the same rank.
So that's the argument for two captains. How do you respond to my view of retaining the lieutenant status?
Listen, I, I think, I think the thought is, and, and again, not necessarily to abolish those positions where they go away and they never come back, I think, I think they're there. Because, look, Mr. Albright, when the Justice Center was built in the seventies, we would never imagine we were going to build a facility that we've just built. Long after I'm gone, if there's a need for that role, that position exists. And that's the point at which the next chief or whoever that person is may say, hey, we have a clear need for this, and comes to you all and articulates it, and that's the point at which you go, hey, we need to, we need to re-instill it.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave this on first reading.
All right. We'll consider ordinance number 2017-27 to have had its first reading. Unless you wish to weigh in on something else, Ms. Knappick, I think your floor duty is, oh.
I'll speak.
That brings us to resolution number 2017-38. And are we revisiting this, or is this, this, this a new one?
Yes, the second piece of legislation to the other resolution that we approved the last council session, Mr. President.
Okay. So if you would please read the title, Mr. Powell, I appreciate it.
Resolution number 2017-38, A Resolution Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levis and Certifying Them to the County Auditor.
Okay. Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
This is a repeat piece of legislation that we do every year at this time. And as I previously noted, this is the second piece of legislation relating to our 2018 tax budget. Resolution 2017-34, which we passed on the third, on July 3rd. There are no changes to the millage. You should have all received your projections. Mr. Dordia copied council on that and I distributed it appropriately. And there is a slight variance or decrease in the projected revenues from 2017, nominal $1,800, just for your reference. And as I've said, you have the attached Excel spreadsheet comparing the property taxes from 2013 to 2018 with a slight upward trend through the years. But again, this is projected next year, a slight rollback equivalent. We have received the county auditor's information and approval, you've seen that, and now we have a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies, certifying them to the county auditor for 2018. So we have that application, we have to approve it this evening, and this will forward on verifying the auditor's projections and our acceptance of those projections for the upcoming year. And that will be presented at the September 5th council meeting, the final, final. So that's today, yes. So this is the final, final. We don't have to defer, it'll go to the county auditor. Andre and the administration will sign it, and it's something that we go through every year at this point in time. Are there any questions? I mean, you had time to review the projections, it's pretty straightforward. See no questions, I will, oh, is it questions?
I, I just want to clarify, this might be oversimplifying it, but we, we certified it and this is coming back to us.
They gave us the millage percentage last time, we said fine, they did the extensions, now they're coming back and saying these are the projections based on your approval of the percentages.
We're okaying the final product now.
Right. This showing what our income is going to be based on the millage projections. So do you have a motion?
Yeah, motion to suspend rules, Mr. President, and move resolution 2017-38 to third final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel and there's a second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the rule on the suspension of rules?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, there's a second. Second, Ms. Knappick. Any questions? I'm sure Mr. Dordia would be more than happy to go into the minutia that all this is based upon. And he actually told me he had a half-hour present.
No, he does not.
Any further questions? Seeing none, would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2017-38 passes.
Thank you.
Now, we turn to resolution 2017-39, it'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, slated for three readings. Would you please read the title, Mr. Powell?
Resolution number 2017-39, A Resolution Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds for Consulting Services with Green Arrow Engineering.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have here this evening, Green Arrow is an engineering group that has been, we have, we have been working with them since we purchased the anaerobic digestion unit from Quasar. They've been assisting us with operations, with feedstock procurement, with equipment, repairs and upgrades as needed. And the big thing has been basically some computer services due to the fact that when Quasar left the system, they left it with a lot of what they called intellectual property, which at this point has required some additional services in terms of daily operation. I don't want to use the word hacking, but at this point, I mean, it basically, their green, Green Arrow is working through these operational issues and, and helping our guys put all this into a language that makes it easier for us to operate. Again, it's one of these situations where we knew, when we had the initial conversations in terms of buying Quasar out, we knew that there would be some transitional issues that would need to be dealt with. And this is basically, hopefully, the first, well, it'll be the first this year, potentially we may see an additional $40,000 next year, which is actually being budgeted into 2018 to continue with Green Arrow's. Again, basically, the, the primary part of this for 2018, which isn't really so much tonight, but just as, as an FYI, in terms of feedstock procurement, which ultimately but just as an FYI, in terms of feedstock procurement, which ultimately, if we don't have the right feedstock, the system doesn't work the way we need it to work. So, again, this is really, while we look at this, and I'll admit, when I first saw this, I was a little bit aghast by the numbers from a dollar standpoint, but as I look further, as I've worked through further with this and spoken with Mr. Gibbons, this is only an investment, again, in our future for proper operation. Sylvester?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I remember when we had had discussions when we first took over operations, we had confidence in the skill set of the current staff that we have to be able to operate the plant and take over operations. I guess I didn't know if you want to try to give us a picture of how much of this, how much operations is the consultant responsible for, and how much is it just the feedstock procurement? Is it 50/50?
The Green Arrow's provided many functions for us as we transitioned and taken over the facility. They actually have even a maintenance person on staff that has done a lot of the maintenance and upkeep on the cogeneration unit itself, the generator of the ADS. That piece of equipment is probably, oh, $800,000 to $900,000 piece of equipment. It's pretty technical. I don't know that I have anybody really familiar enough that I would trust to work on it at this point. As they have been doing some work on that equipment, they have been training our staff. So, the goal would be, and I think Mr. Sanders brought it up, by the end of 2018, to transition them totally away from it, where we're doing all the maintenance, all the operations, and where essentially it's ours to run at that point. Would we still use them down the road? Maybe. And I say maybe only because they have a lot more knowledge. Much of Green Arrow was part of Quasar at one time, so they were there when the system was built, when it was designed. And that is knowledge that we can't get really anywhere else.
Sure.
As far as feedstock procurement, that's going to be the part that, that's something we have never done as a division of the city. We've never really gone out and looked for those types of waste streams that will produce enough power that we can maximize that. We're going to rely on them, or maybe even a broker that specializes in that type of material. But, excuse me, down the road, I would think, hopefully, by the end of next year, if we are doing any consulting work, it would be in that regard, just to find other feedstocks and replace ones that we lose along the way.
So, we fully intend to absorb the full responsibility in the ops side? We might retain them on the feedstock.
And I will say, I mean, this is all part of the current ONM budget, that we are no longer paying to Quasar to operate the facility. So, we are using those funds to pay Green Arrow.
So, we're still to the good, if you will.
Yes.
Yes, just to set the record straight, I remember the discussion also. And it was very clear that we had a resource, a technical resource that was involved with Quasar, that we would utilize. I mean, it was planned utilization. I think that's Clemens Halings and his organization. And he was the founder of that whole process, worked in that in a very instrumental role, and has developed now a third-party consulting firm to come in as the technical advisor because he knows the process, he knows the function, he knows the systems, and him and his team, you know, kind of split away from Quasar. So, I think we all remember that. The name Clemens Halings and Green Arrow, I don't know where the allegations were that we're paying an accountant. Maybe we are paying the accountant, and they're paying Clemens. I don't know as a pastor. Yes, Mr. Dordia?
I can answer that question because I just looked it up. It's not uncommon for somebody to have a registered agent to receive documents from government or legal documents.
A clearinghouse.
Right.
Right. So, all his documents come to her, which makes sense if an engineer's out working in the field. You want your CPA or your attorney receiving important documents so they can file timely. So, that's common.
Yeah, we're going from a profit-generating entity to a nonprofit. There's transactions that are required on the feedstock to optimize the performance, plus the technical component of maintenance and repairs and ongoing assistance. We're very fortunate to have Green Arrow and Clemens and his crew as a resource, and we knew that there would be those expenses as of ongoing insurance for the operational continuity and maintenance of the facility. So, well done.
Just for everyone's edification, explain what feedstock are. It almost sounds like we're feeding cattle. Not what we're doing.
Feeding bacteria.
We throw that around, and not everyone's going to know what the heck that is.
In simplest terms, feedstocks are high-strength organic waste, so.
Manure.
It could be, yeah, there are many sources, a lot of it's food waste. Oil and grease from grease traps that's flowing from around the city is actually a feedstock that different haulers in the area collect and bring to our facility, and we generate power from that grease.
Mr. Albright?
And when we have smells, in the past, because we have a long period of feedstock, correct? Or too much.
Correct.
So, getting the proper amount from the proper source is very important.
And it's a balance.
Just like our own internal system, this system needs bacteria to digest this material, and that digestive process is what produces the byproduct that, is it usually methane gas that we use to run our generator? So, we can either starve our bacteria, bacteria, or overfeed it. So, that's why there's a delicate balance, just like with our own system, that there's kind of a delicate balance that too much rich food is not always a good food. Is that correct? Or, I know it's pretty simple, but that seems to be what's going on here.
You'd have made as good a science teacher as you do an attorney, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot. You might not recall, but maybe Andre Dordia, what are we saving, I believe, per month? I think we had this number some time ago, by generating our own electricity out there. I remember a figure of something like $20,000, $23,000?
Thirty thousand. Thirty thousand, I think.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, to have a consultant to help us utilize that equipment effectively and efficiently and generate, you know, our own power and save 20, let's just say $20,000 to $30,000 a month, I think we're way money ahead. So, well done.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, appreciate that.
With that, I would motion to adopt.
Second.
Oh, it's budgeted?
Oh, no, it isn't budgeted, is it? Is this a budgeted item?
Yes.
So, it's listed as budgeted.
So, we don't need three readings?
Yep. So, Mr. Sanders is on top of things. He's made a motion to adopt, is there a second? Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich? Yep. Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Resolution number 2017-39 passes. Brings us to ordinance number 2017-40. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, and Mr. Bowers has kindly been patient enough to wait through and sit through all the other legislation. So, you're almost up. If you would, read the title, please.
Ordinance number 2017-40, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2017-15 by authorizing the mayor to transfer the community reinvestment area agreement from Morel Properties LLC to ILEXO LLC, a new owner, and modifying commitments and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, Mr. President. To avoid any perceived conflict of interest, I've asked that Mr. Myers, a committee member on the Finance Committee, introduce this piece of legislation and continue the process toward approval of this ordinance.
So, are you going to recuse yourself from any further?
No, but I just, I don't need to do that, but just to avoid any potential conflict of interest because there is a scenario where that Alexo NetOps is a tenant of a business that I'm in partnership with, and they'll be departing and going to this facility. I support this initiative 100%, but I would just like Mr. Myers to go ahead and make the introduction this evening.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. Yeah, I met last week with Jonathan Malay regarding this. This is basically kind of a paperwork thing. The building is being purchased by NetOps, and if you recall, a while back, Alan Ratliff was here, and he asked for abatement. He was moving his offices to this facility, which I believe was an Oriental Food Restaurant at one time.
Among other things.
Yeah, it's been a number of things. So, we approved the CRA back at that time. Mr. Ratliff really didn't proceed any further with that. He's gotten no benefit from that CRA that we approved then. He did send a letter on August 24th asking that we transfer the benefit of that tax abatement to the new owner along with the property. It's simply a matter of paperwork. It basically, it's the same abatement, it just goes along with the property. The folks out at NetOps, who've been in our community for quite some time out at the Worcester Industrial Park, moving their office facilities out toward, out off of 585. So, I would take questions, but more importantly, we have a gentleman here from NetOps, Andrew Bowers. If anyone has questions, what his plans are.
I'll be answering any questions. I can maybe agree with you. So, we're allowed for a facility, NetOps Consulting, we're an outsourcing firm, and we've been in Worcester. This will actually be our 10th year anniversary in September, so we're looking to expand. We do some private labeling services for AT&amp;T, and this facility will allow us to really have capacity to grow and also add additional features and functionality to our services. So, we're excited about the opportunity and happy to answer any questions that we have.
Great.
Mr. Allen?
Sir, you say that, well, maybe it's not too personal, but in summary that you've given to us, 23 employees you have at this point.
Yes, sir.
So, what you're saying in your recent comment is, that's for the present, but you're hoping to increase that?
We are. In fact, part of the reason for the build out is so that we can expand. We do have room at our purpose, the lead we're at, but part of what we're building out is an actual NOC, which is a Network Operation Center. And having that blank slate to kind of work with gives us the ability to put in the type of technology that we need. We are looking to expand. This will give us roughly, without the additional, without adding the addition at this point, just building out the 4,600 square feet that's there, will give us the ability to add roughly about 40% of the staff.
40% more.
We think that facility will hold between 40 and 50 in Florence.
It's very reassuring, Andrew, for you and your team to see you grow the way you have over the last 10 years. It's to be commended. It's a great departure now from a leased facility to an owned and invested in facility. So, well done, continued success, and keep growing. You have a great enterprise, and with the AT&amp;T now relationship, that's a very strong opportunity for you to continue the momentum of your organization. So, congratulations.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Worcester's definitely not known well as the tech mecca, and we'd like to change that. So, part of the plan for this facility is we try to hire within and train within. So, part of this will really be setting up the facility in a way that we can intake technicians and give them the appropriate training, and try to retain the talent locally here. So, there's some things that that facility offers just from a geographical standpoint, having a new build out, cutting some of the newer technology that will happen that we think will help attract talent, retain talent, and hopefully, long-term, have a larger technical pool here to draw from.
Excellent.
Any further, thank you very much for being this evening, Bob. Any further questions from the council?
If not, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. When would you please call the rule?
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich? Yes. Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Myers.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers, is there a second? Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the rule on the motion to adopt?
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich? Yes. Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2017-40 passes. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Bowers.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Again, Jonathan Malay probably worked his magic to make this happen.
That's why he's a board winner.
The CRA, in my world, sounds for cloud readiness and such. Introduce me in a formative way.
Well, this comes a time where I'm looking for someone to make a motion to go into executive session, to talk about personnel matters. Motion by Mr. Ansel to go into executive session, or is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the rule on the motion to go into executive session?
Albright?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich? Yes. Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in executive session, and therefore, off the record.